Good evening, we are back in open session and I would like to call on Board Member Pastor Alan Sheraus to lead the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
As you are able and comfortable, you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated.
Thank you, we're going to continue our meeting with the recognition of our outgoing Board Member, Mr. Michael Logan. Mr. Logan, on behalf of the Board of Education, thank you for your service. You have been a dedicated advocate for District 3 and for the students and staff of Guilford County Schools. We'd like to present you with this token of our appreciation for the time that you've served.
I'd like to say thank you to the support of staff of Guilford County Schools, teachers, people that worked in the central office, and the voters of the Northwest Community and Greensburg. I look forward to four years from now running again. So, Mr. Coates, we'll give you notice on that. I do look forward to a level playing field in the next election. Our schools are important. As it is right now, charter schools are progressing at a rate, and there is a reason for that. We have three of the top highest schools in the state of North Carolina in Guilford County, but we have over thirty schools that are performing below the lowest charter school. And that is where we need to address within Guilford County. While we're having a focus on the top schools, we need to put a focus on the bottom. We need to put attention there, we need to put resources to help those schools succeed. And I'd like to say thank you to Board Members that worked with me. I'd like to say thank you to the Board Members that were respectful to me. And that was a number of the Board Members that's sitting up here. There are some Board Members I wish they had been politer, nicer. I was drugged through the mud. I was accused of being a racially, gender advantaged human being and drugged through the mud by this Board. The School Board should not have those actions. As a public educator within Guilford County Schools for twenty-six years, I deserved more respect than what I was given. And as I say to the staff at Guilford County Schools, I say thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. I would like now to invite our Board Attorney Jill Wilson to the podium to facilitate our next item.
Every time, Board Members, that we come to another year, it's always a real marker for me about how wonderful it is to work with people who are truly committed to education. And it's an event and an excitement to be able to swear in new Board Members and invite them to continue to participate in this wonderful process of educating the students of Guilford County and of participating in education for the whole community in Guilford County. And today, I am so honored that I would be able to introduce to you Chief District Court Judge Teresa Vincent. Judge Vincent is a lifetime public servant and, much like you, cares so much about what happens to the citizens of Guilford County. She started as an Assistant District Attorney in Guilford County and then was a District Court Judge starting in 2000, so for some period of time, longer than all of you have been on the Board as far as I know, was named Chief District Court Judge in 2019. And she is known broadly for her commitment to fairness, to respect for all people, to making sure everybody has a positive and just experience in the court system. She worked very hard on juvenile justice and worked with some of us to have a commission that makes sure we look at juvenile justice issues fairly, working with law enforcement, with juvenile counselors, with schools, and with the court system. And so, for lots of reasons, it is so appropriate for me to present to you Judge Vincent, who will participate in the swearing-in ceremony. And I'd invite all four of you new Board Members, new and returning Board Members, to please come forward, bring whatever family members and your Bible if you choose, or whatever you'd like to use, and Judge Vincent, I turn it to you. Yeah, I will. What's your, is this the best?
Whatever works, Lisa's in charge.
Of course. And Board Members, we're going to do a repeat after me, but your oath is right there if you want to read along as we go.
I think this will be my last swearing-in before I retire on December 31st of this year, so thank you for having me.
And you're going to repeat after me and you will say your name in the space that's appropriate. I say your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as a member of the Guilford County Board of Education. So help me God. I, say your name, do firmly, solemnly, and sincerely swear that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States. To the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God. I, you'll state your name, do further swear that I will will, that I will will and truly execute the duties of the Office of Guilford County Board of Education according to the best of my skill and ability according to law, so help me God. Congratulations.
Thank you and welcome. We will now have a short recess and reception in the lobby, so Member of the public who are here, please join us in the lobby. And we're directing Board Members to come and sign their oaths. Thank you.
That...
All right, I'd like to call our meeting back to order. Thank you for joining us in our reception. Welcome, Mr. Coates. Let's proceed with the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I know Board Member Erby is on the phone, she's been tending to her mother, so she is joining us by phone. At this time, I'd like to call Jill Wilson back to the podium to lead us in the process of electing our Board Chair.
On, there we go. It's usually automatically on, how about that? Board Members, we, as you know, have our organizational meeting every December by statute and bylaws. This is that meeting. So in this meeting, we will elect a Chair and Vice Chair. I will conduct the election for Chair, and then your Chair can conduct the election for Vice Chair. To describe the process, I'll open the nominations in a minute. We will, if we have more than two nominations after the first round, we will narrow it down to two nominations, and then we will vote again, and if there is a majority for any one person, that person will become Chair, and I will be done doing this. So, hint, hint. So I would at this moment like to open the floor for nominations for the position of Chair. Nominations do not require a second.
I nominate Dina Hayes Green in appreciation for her continued commitment to equity.
I nominate Linda Wellborn.
If you can show your appreciation for anything, just do this so that we can continue uninterrupted. Thank you.
Are there any other nominations? Then the nominations will be closed. I am passing out. I thought we were going like really cruddy old-school, so I had this cruddy paper, but of course, your Board Clerk has created ballots. So let me remind you the process for public meetings, as you will, all four of you new Board Members, be reminded when we do our ethical, ethics training in January, you have to sign your ballot, there's no such thing as secret ballot, you sign your ballot and they're available for the public to view if they so choose. So I'm going to pass out the ballots. Because Ms. Erby is remote, after I have gathered and counted the ballots, we'll ask her for her vote so that she doesn't have any advantage over anyone else to know how the votes go.
She's not talking, she's just passing out the little paper ballots.
And Kim, I'll call, I'll ask for your vote after I've gotten everybody's votes up.
I can put it in the chat if you want.
It's got to be public, Ms. Erby. You'll have to state it publicly.
And Ms. Erby, I'm ready for your vote.
I vote for Dina Hayes.
And so by a vote of... Who are we, oh, Diane's not here. All right, by a vote of six to two, Ms. Hayes, you are re-elected Chair. Congratulations to you. I will have these ballots with the Clerk, and I am done. I will have the, I'll do the passing out part, that's the part I'll still do if you need me.
Great, thank you Jill, and thank you so much to my colleagues, thank you so much for the public. I know that there were so many emails and phone calls and text messages that were sent on my behalf, and when someone asked me if I was going to run for Chair, I said, "I don't make that decision" because I don't think leaders pick themselves. I think it's the people who are with them and give them instructions make that decision. So you all made that decision for me, so thank you, and I look forward to, or maybe not look forward to, your decision next year. But your support, and I hope that I, you feel that I'm accountable to you because that's important to me. So anyway, thank you to the community, thank you to my colleagues and all of those that are with me in this leadership, this isn't something I do myself. So we are now at the time to elect our Vice Chair, and Jill is going to hand those out. Is there a... And Jill is going to hand those out. Is there a nomination for vice chair?
I nominate Betty Jenkins, in appreciation for her continued work on behalf of all our students.
That doesn't need a second either, Jill?
No, no nominations need seconds.
Any other nominations?
I'll just keep these paper ballots then.
All right.
And you can proceed with, I would assume, an election by agreement?
All right, so if there's no opposition?
I would vote. Go ahead and vote.
Okay, Chrissy? Linda? Pastor?
Yes.
Betty? Of course, yes. Deborah? David? Kim?
Yes.
And Dina, yes.
Congratulations to all. We look forward to another good year, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you, and congratulations. All right, let's get back to this agenda here. Approval of the agenda, blah, blah, blah. All right. I think she's gonna do a piece of that. Okay, gotcha. "Let's continue our meeting by recognizing our December Employee of the Month. From teachers to custodians, it takes the entire team to support our students and prepare them for the future. One such position that is often overlooked is that of the school treasurer. At High Point Central, that role belongs to Jody Hughes, who has become a key component of the success of the school over the years." Is Jody here? Can you come on down to the podium? Welcome. So while I talk about you. "Jody's love for High Point Central goes beyond her job title, as her children, husband, and his family all attended the school. She herself is a Guilford County Schools alum, having attended Southwest High in High Point. Jody's support for the High Point community and its learners is felt as she provides support to the school in a multitude of ways. This dedication is what earned her the nomination of Employee of the Month for December. Mrs. Hughes is an extraordinary employee at High Point Central who goes above and beyond in every role she takes on, wrote Assistant Principal Hector Gomez in his nomination. In addition to her duties as treasurer, she steps in as a nurse, providing care for six students, and as a counselor when our offices are full, offering support whenever needed. She is also invaluable in assisting with maintenance requests, knowing every corner of the building and what needs attention. When our front desk is short-staffed, Mrs. Hughes is there to help as a secretary. Her positive attitude is contagious, always greeting everyone with a smile, and she actively supports students during hallway transitions. Mrs. Hughes is a truly, is truly an all-around asset to our school, and her dedication and hard work make her more than deserving of being Employee of the Month for Guilford County Schools. Jody received a $50 gift card courtesy of the Greensboro J.C.'s, and during the month of December, your photo will be displayed here at the district's central offices at High Point Central High and the Greensboro J.C.'s offices. At this time, I'd like to ask Board Member Chrissy Pratt to read aloud this certificate honoring Jody."
Good evening and congratulations.
Thank you.
So your certificate says, "Guilford County Board of Education Certificate of Recognition, Presented to Jody Hughes, High Point Central High, for Employee of the Month, Sponsored by the Greensboro J.C.'s, and Given December 2024, Signed by our Superintendent Dr. Whitney Oakley and our Chairwoman Dina Hayes." So I'll bring this down to you.
Thank you so much. I really do appreciate this. I love what I do. I love the students. I love the staff. I love Guilford County Schools. It really is nice to see one of your classified employees get the nomination, especially treasurers, get the nomination and get the Employee of the Month for December. So I do thank you, everyone, and I really do appreciate it.
We appreciate you, and we'd like to, for you and your family, any of the school representatives that are here to come down because we'd like to personally congratulate you. All right, congratulations again. Now we will recognize our Volunteer of the Month for December. Would Mr. Daniel Botchway please come to the podium at this time? All right. "Daniel Botchway volunteers many hours throughout the week to support the students and staff at Erwin Montessori. Mr. Botchway is present every day in the mornings to assist with students' arrivals and in the afternoon to assist with dismissals. He supports after-school clubs for our students and helped organize a team of teachers to assist with a support group for some of the male students and scholars at Erwin. When our school families could not support the need for ACES, he carefully thought of a way to help parents receive some assistance with after-school care. Mr. Botchway also currently pitches in with recess, lunch duty, classroom support, and even office support during times of need. He is a positive parental presence for our students, staff, and has built a positive relationship with them as he engages with all of our students, not only during the school day, but during our parent nights, skate nights, and other family events." Can you skate?
A little bit.
Oh, yeah. "Mr. Botchway is a constant helping hand who is always willing to go above and beyond, which has made him an integral part of our school community," says Brenda Green, teacher at Erwin Montessori, who nominated Daniel Botchway. "As a Volunteer of the Month for December, you were surprised with a $50 gift card courtesy of Toyota of Greensboro, and during the month of December, your photo will be on display at the district's central offices, Erwin Montessori, and Toyota of Greensboro." So go tell everybody to take a test drive, so then go in and see your picture. At this time, I'd like to ask Board Member Pastor Alan Sharaws to present Daniel Botchway with a certificate of appreciation and recognition on behalf of the board.
Mr. Botchway, what a pleasure to be able to offer this on behalf of our board. Gift certificates and certificates are small tokens of an absolutely giant and monumental impact that you're making. You make a difference every day, and we are so grateful for you. And so here, this from the Guilford County Board of Education. "A certificate of recognition presented to Daniel Botchway, Erwin Montessori Elementary School for Volunteer of the Month, December of 2024. It is signed by our Superintendent Dr. Whitney Oakley and our Chairperson, Dina Hayes-Green."
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say thank you for the award. It's not really needed because I love what I do every day. And I'm just glad that they allow me to do it every day. I take a pleasure in doing it. I wake up in the morning like it's a job and make sure I'm there before 7:20 to get the kids out the car. And it's just, like I said, I just enjoy doing it, so I just look forward to keep doing it.
Well, bless you, and thank you. We appreciate it. We'd also like to congratulate you, shake your hand, and thank you, any of your family members or school representatives that are here, family, friends. Whoever's here with you, just tell them to come on up. All right, we are now, we are now at public comments, and we would just like to remind the public that as you come to the podium, you have three minutes to make your comments. When the amber light comes on, you have 15 seconds left. When the red light comes on, your time is up, and we would like for you to wrap up your comments so that the next speaker is able to begin with their comments. We also like to ask for all of our participants and members that are here with us that if you support what's being said, again, to do that this way so that people can continue their comments uninterrupted. Please approach the podium with your name and address. And our first speaker is Brandon Wrencher, followed by CJ Brinson. Welcome.
Hey, good evening, board and community. My name is Brandon Wrencher. I stay off of Van Street in the Old Ashboro neighborhood. I am the parent of two GCS students. I believe that the achievement gap can't be closed by the school system alone. To close that gap, I believe it will take a collective effort across systems and cross-leadership. I am proud that three of the top public schools in the state come from Guilford County, and I believe that for our county to continue to claim this kind of statewide leadership and to expand so we have even more top schools, we must support the work of diversity, equity, and inclusion. DEI is the law and is about serving all students equitably. In other words, it is about closing the gaps. Contrary to how it is being characterized in many circles, DEI has always been about the good of all students and all people. When equity is the goal and these gaps are closed, it is good for all students and all people. Dina Hayes-Green has championed the work of equity in our schools for many years, and she continues to provide stellar and committed leadership. In this current climate of efforts to undermine and divert money away from public education and equity, we need even more strong and effective leaders to champion fully funding our public schools and to champion equity as the standard so all students have the chance to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. CJ Brinson, followed by Jennifer Shaw. Welcome.
Good evening, CJ Brinson, Reverend CJ Brinson, 446 Guarrelle Street. I'm here tonight because I'm told that it's not often that black fathers address the board. I'm here as a father of three students who attend Guilford County Schools, a student at the Early College at Guilford, two students at Morehead Elementary. And I stand here tonight to encourage our board members to continue in the tradition of providing justice and equity for all children in this county. I stand here tonight as there is currently an attack on public education all over the country. And I want to say that although public education may not be a perfect model in producing outcomes for black children and children of color, the public school model is still the most qualified and proven education model that produces the best outcomes for all students. The world that is awaiting our children is vastly diverse, uniquely creative, and extremely difficult to navigate at times. Currently, I'm willing to bet that every school environment in this county is a microcosm of the world our children are going to face. And just because there are challenges, it doesn't mean that we should abort the mission now. So let us continue in the tradition of addressing the achievement gap. Diversity, equity, and inclusion is the law and is about serving all students equitably. It is now time for us to continue in the tradition of making sure that books are not banned that tell the truth. The world doesn't exist in our boxes. We need more books about race, class, different religions, gender, and sexuality. We may not be ready to move closer to each other, but our children are ready to move closer. Let us continue to stand in the tradition that has reduced three of the top schools here in the state of North Carolina. Let us continue to support Chairwoman Dina Hayes-Green, who's, because of her leadership, we all know of an achievement gap, who hasn't just led here in Guilford County, but who is a voice that is relied on in other school districts, county commissions across the state, public and corporate entities all throughout the nation. Shame on those who, because of vainglory, conspiracy theory, mom groups, and politics, who would seek to deny her of her right to continue to lead this board. Her leadership is needed now more than ever. Let us continue to do what is right for all those involved in the school system. Let us continue to serve our children. Thank you for allowing me to share.
Thank you. Jennifer Shaw, followed by Lizzie Biddle. Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Madam Chair, honorable members of the Guilford County School Board, our esteemed superintendent, and your excellent staff members. My name is Jennifer Shaw. My address is 7928 Beaufort Lane, Greensboro. I've lived and worked in Guilford County for more than three decades, and I have two adult children who are graduates of Guilford County Schools. I want to begin by expressing my appreciation for your public service. Congratulations to those of you who are newly elected, and many thanks to those of you who've been serving previously. I know and appreciate that each of you has the best interest of all of our students in mind as you make decisions for Guilford County Schools. I would like to congratulate your work in recent years to address the needs of children in our schools through the Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. I hope you will continue your support of these important initiatives to address previously unmet needs despite the political pressure you are facing. Please do not let forces of fear and hate keep you from addressing the needs of all children. When I read in the news and record that Guilford County has top-ranked schools at every grade level in the U.S. News &amp; World Report rankings, it makes me proud. I know that Guilford County Schools can continue to educate all students in our community who enter our schools with different positionality. We must continue to recognize that not all students come into our school with a multitude of advantages of their position in society as my, as cisgender, white, non-disabled, and economically and socially advantaged students like my two adult Guilford County School graduates, who have gone on to successful advanced education and successful careers. My children deserved an excellent education, and so too do all of the children who come into the system who do not have their advantages. We have an excellent staff, excellent homegrown superintendent, excellent chairwoman who has always been even-handed, thoughtful, inclusive, and focused on providing the best opportunities for every student. I encourage you to continue to follow her leadership in this work for all children in Guilford County Schools. As always, thank you for your service to the community. May you continue to strive to enhance and improve opportunities for all children in Guilford County, regardless of how they identify themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Lizzie Biddle, followed by Betsy Harrington. Welcome.
Good evening, esteemed Board of Education members, Guilford County School staff, and my fellow community members. My name is Lizzie Biddle. I live at 5103 Ainsworth Drive, close to Guilford College. My congratulations to the Board of Education members who won their recent campaigns. Your hard work, time, and diligence should be commended in addition to those that are continuing to serve. Running for public office is not easy, and you ran because you care about students and our community. Thank you. I was disappointed, to say the least, to learn of an attack on our Chairwoman Dina Hayes-Green. Ms. Hayes-Green has so diligently served, both in her role as board chair and as her time as a board member for over two decades. Myself, as a community member who cares deeply about our public schools and ensuring all students are equipped to be lifelong learners, I am so grateful for Ms. Hayes-Green's care and dedication to the students and families in our community. Equity simply means fairness. It recognizes that we do not all start life from the same place. Our zip code, our race, our abilities, and the class we come from are all products of our birth and are outside of our control. Equity recognizes the simple truth that centuries of history have a very real impact on all of us into the present. I ask those who oppose Ms. Hayes-Green and those of us who stand for diversity, equity, and inclusion, does equity not align with the values and principles of our school system to ensure all students can thrive? Does diversity and inclusion not align with our shared vision that all students, all children be given opportunities? Do we not all benefit when gaps in student learning outcomes diminish? Ensuring that those our school system has left behind for generations, black and brown students, have opportunities does not take away from their white peers. I'll say that again. Sometimes we need to hear it. Ensuring all students can be successful does not take away from other students. Isn't there enough success to go around? Isn't there enough opportunity to go around? Isn't there enough well-being to go around? In fact, white families such as my own need to ask ourselves if we can expect any institution like schools to operate optimally for all students, including our own, when so many are left behind. In 2025 and beyond, stay the course for equity. We all benefit. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Betsy Harrington, followed by April Parker. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Betsy Harrington. I live at 1602 Alderman Drive in Greensboro. Dr. Oakley and Board of Education members, thank you for your leadership and your dedication to the education of our children and young people in Guilford County. I was delighted to read about several Guilford County Schools which have been ranked among the best in North Carolina. We're so proud of all the hard work of these students, teachers, and administrators. What an honor and a tribute to Guilford County Schools. But we also know that due to structural racism and poverty, all Guilford County Schools are not equal, and they have differing needs. I'm equally proud of those schools which might not be rated as outstanding by the criteria of U.S. News and World Report, but which are striving against difficult circumstances to provide every student the chance to reach their full potential. These schools, too, are doing outstanding work. Every student in every school in Guilford County is not the same and does not have the same needs. Thank you for prioritizing diversity, equity, and inclusion. It sounds like a theme tonight, doesn't it? These are basic human values and not, thank you for not letting the term DEI become some sort of derogatory term. It's about fairness. Equity matters. I know that some schools in the round, districts around the country, including some here in North Carolina, are banning books, making teachers uneasy or afraid of teaching a more inclusive version of history and science, of not supporting students and families whose sexual orientation or sexual identity falls out of the mainstream. Thank you for not bending to the loud voices of those who seem to think that students today may be too fragile to learn about things that might be difficult or different. Thank you for supporting teachers and media specialists who know and appreciate what materials and curriculum are age-appropriate for their students. On another note, the internet and social media sources today are primary sources of information for many of us, adults as well as young people. Unfortunately, along with this rapid-fire information, we are bombarded with an alarming amount of misinformation and disinformation and hatred. In order to be equipped for the future, our young people must be taught how to think critically and to distinguish facts from misinformation. Helping students learn how to think is not the same as teaching them what to think. The world of tomorrow will be exciting, complex, and culturally diverse, and our young people must be prepared for that world. Thank you for your service. I am proud to be a supporter of Guilford County Schools.
Thank you. April Parker, followed by Julie Ann Cooper. Welcome.
Good evening, all.
Good evening.
My name's April Parker. I live at 1101 North Elm Street. I'm a former educator. I earned my stripes as a school media specialist for eight years within Guilford County Schools. I'm also the mother of a graduate of Guilford County. Now, my 21-year-old is pursuing her life goals out in the big world, having benefited from a good education in public school system, leaving me with the quiet, childless condo. Go Whirlies! Both local schools mentioned were the first to be integrated within our lifetimes. I can unlearn that. We shouldn't either. Presently, even as an empty nester, I remain vigilant and supportive of an agenda that pursues equitable outcomes for all students, which was honestly not the origin in which our school system was established. As an active community member, I have witnessed the attack of trans students, DEI, black women in leadership, all by the same, small, homogenous group. It is my hope that they can quickly move on from their disgruntledness about the Michael Logan fiasco, the same way they encourage our communities to get over centuries of educational disenfranchisement, historic discrimination, and inequalities. Just move on. These blame games, dog whistle politics, smoke and mirrors, all of these antics that actually distract us from our urgent work of ensuring equitable outcomes for all students. Notably, our chairwoman did not create the systemic issues like the concentrations of poverty that predominantly plague the schools primarily attended by black and brown students. Collectively, we have normalized Title I, as if they need to exist, as if the conditions of poverty are standards in our community. Where is the outrage? Where is the curiosity? It is not the conservatives who fought for the right to speak at the Board of Education meetings that they so enjoy now. It is not their rhetoric nor their historic leadership that has demonstrated to be on the right side of justice. I am grateful for the leadership of this board, and especially grateful for the strength and sound judgment exercised by this Board Chair, who simply demands an accountability that without focus on the least of these will fail to deliver to the best of these. Thank you for understanding how hard it is for some to see structural challenges. Under your leadership, we are charged to addressing the whole of a challenge that will help us successfully educate every child in this district. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie Ann Cooper, followed by our final speaker, Blair Talton. Welcome.
Julie Ann Cooper, 1314 Westridge Forest Court in Greensboro. I was recently reflecting why someone would want to be a school board member. Is it the pay? I don't think so. Is it the accolades and gratitude expressed by parents? Maybe tonight, but I don't know that that's always the case. Is it so you can attend all the late-night meetings? Certainly not. It takes incredible dedication to our public schools to step into this role, and although none of you are Santa Claus, you are sometimes asked to fulfill a lot of unrealistic wishes. So I'm here to simply say thank you. Thank you for leading our students and staff through many challenges. Thank you for being good stewards of our taxpayer money. Thank you for making the tough decisions. Thank you for building beautiful new buildings and maintaining the existing ones with limited resources. Thank you for doing your best with budgeting challenges. And thank you for protecting all children, not just the ones whose parents are the loudest. As a parent of five Guilford County students who have graduated, thank you, Dr. Miller, and are now successful adults, thank you. While it's easy for people to criticize, the successes of Guilford County Schools far outweigh its shortcomings, your servant leadership is greatly appreciated.
Thank you. And our final speaker, Blair Talton.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Blair Talton, and I am a junior at the Early College Academy at Dudley High School. I was selected to speak on behalf of the hundreds of students who have attended HBCU tours this year, facilitated by Blake Odom and the Motivational Foundation. We visited Alabama A&amp;M, Jackson State University, and Alabama State University. What stood out to me wasn't just the rich African-American history at these colleges, but the living legacy of that history. Walking through the halls of these HBCUs and seeing students who look like me striving for a higher education was empowering. It made me feel like I could achieve the same. One of the most powerful moments for me was walking across the Edmund Pettus Bridge, knowing that Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and other brave activists marched there over 50 years ago to secure the rights that I have today. It gave me a deep sense of pride and responsibility, especially as I prepare to vote in upcoming elections. Looking to the future, I believe our educational curriculum should emphasize the full spectrum of African-American history, not just the struggles, but the triumphs that continue to shape our society. We, as students, should also learn about the institutions like HBCUs and schools so we can understand their impact and opportunities. HBCUs are more than just colleges. They're symbols of empowerment and progress. By recognizing their contributions and updating our education system, we can inspire future generations to carry that legacy forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And that concludes our public speaking section for the evening. Trying to get back to the agenda that I took out somewhere here. Oh, thank you. We are now at the consent agenda. Dr. Oakley.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. This evening's consent agenda includes the following items: approval of November 24 meeting minutes, personnel action report, an addendum to the Personnel Action Report, 26, 27, and 27, 28 traditional academic calendars first reading, class size waiver request, contractual agreement with Comfort Systems USA LLC for the Page High School Auditorium HVAC replacement project, contractual agreement with Jeff Hargit Mechanical Incorporated for the Northern Guilford High School chiller replacement project, the contractual agreement with Jeff Hargit Mechanical Incorporated for the Eastern Guilford High School chiller replacement project, the contractual agreement for design services with Andre Johnson Architects for the Irwin Montessori at Archer Elementary School site bond project, and the resolution establishing criteria for the design-build-delivery method for construction projects. That concludes this evening's consent agenda for your consideration.
Thank you. I didn't receive any request to have anything pulled, so we can go ahead and vote on that. I can start with, you, David. Oh, I'm sorry. Is there a motion? All right. Is there a second? Thank you, Lisa. David?
Aye.
Deborah?
Aye.
Betty?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Chrissy?
Yes.
Cam?
Yes.
And Dina, yes, that passes by a vote of eight to zero. All right, we are now at comments from the chair. Nope, that's not it. Welcome again, Mr. Coats, who was sworn in this evening. We look forward to a productive working relationship with you, learning more about you and your experiences in public education. Guilford County Schools is saddened to hear of the passing of Greensboro Councilwoman and former Mayor Yvonne Johnson. Yvonne was a pillar in the Greensboro community, a Dudley High School graduate. If you knew Yvonne, you knew that she loved Dudley, loved Bennett, loved this community. But she also took part in the Civil Rights Movement, including the sit-in set Woolworth's. Her advocacy will go on to be remembered by all in Guilford County, in Guilford County Schools. For those who are interested in the service's visitation, it's this Friday, December 13th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Perry Brown Funeral Home located at 909 East Market Street. Her going-home service is Saturday, December 14th. 12:00 is the family visitation. 1:00 is the service at the Bennett Chapel, which was also her request, 900 East Washington Street. There will be a horse-drawn carriage, march, a walk from the funeral home to Bennett College. So if you're interested in that, you can find information online and to get in touch with us as well. On Wednesday, December 11th, Shift Ed will host a scholarship information session to help families take advantage of their scholarship opportunities. The event is from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. at Union Square Campus on Gate City Boulevard. You can register for this at shift-ed, shift-ed.info/scholarship. The winter break is coming, and it's the perfect time to do some reading. Students who read at least 300 minutes between December 21st and January 5th will have the opportunity to earn a prize. High school students will be entered into a drawing for a Barnes &amp; Noble gift card, and younger students will earn tickets to three UNCG basketball games. So turn in your minutes through Guilford County Schools Bean Stack landing page. Guilford County School families have a new way to pay for school-related items such as field trips, yearbooks, spiritware, and athletic fees. On December 2nd, Guilford County Schools launched the School Cash Online, an electronic payment system that can be found at gcsnc-schoolcashonline.com. Parents may create an account that will give them access to make secure, direct payments with minimal fees. By setting up an account, families will receive an email from School Cash Online with specific items assigned to their child. They may use the system to pay for items at multiple schools and for all purchases except cafeteria items, which will continue using the K-12 Payment Center system until later this spring, when the district will switch to a system called School Cafe. Congratulations to the Dudley and Grimsley football teams for advancing to the playoff rounds for their respective divisions. Grimsley quarterback Faison Brandon has been named the Gatorade North Carolina Player of the Year. Grimsley will continue to the regional finals on Friday night. Thank you. And this concludes my remarks. Dr. Oakley for the superintendent.
Earlier today, we were joined by Governor Roy Cooper at Claxton Elementary, who spoke about the importance of public schools and complimented the great things that are happening here in Guilford County. We also welcome State Superintendent-elect Mo Green. We're proud to be an example of the power of public education, and we look forward to the continued progress of our local public schools that we'll make in partnership with our parents and our community members. I also want to thank the Greensboro Swarm for their generous donation of $10,000. The money will be used to help us continue the important work happening through our high-dose tutoring program. In just a few weeks, we will be opening three new schools funded by the 2020 bond referendum. We are excited to welcome students into new buildings at Peck, Faust, and Brooks Global Study Elementaries. To help with the transition, students at those three schools will learn remotely on December 19th and 20th, so that classrooms will be ready for them on January 6th. As we approach the end of the semester, please be sure that you're connected to your Power School Parent Portal account. This is the best way to see grades and attendance data, as well as other important information about your child's progress. If you don't have access, visit the Guilford Parent Academy page on our website and complete the parent portal request form. It's also the time of year when temperatures can vary greatly, both outside and inside of our buildings, due to the advanced age of many of our HVAC systems. So please remember to dress in layers so that students can be prepared for temperature changes. I also want to thank our families for their patience as we navigated the latest inclement weather event last week. The safety of our students and staff is always our first priority, and as the weather information changes, sometimes our school closure status changes with it. Finally, I want to wish everyone a joyful holiday season. We're just a few weeks away from winter break, and I do hope families enjoy that time relaxing and spending time together. We look forward to seeing you back at school in the new year. That concludes my remarks. But for the second staff report, I'll welcome Dr. Miller and Mr. Fisher, who will give us a school nutrition services update.
Welcome.
Good evening, Dr. Oakley, Madam Chair, and members of the board.
Good evening.
Thank you for this opportunity to provide an update on our school nutrition department. Tonight, we will share an update regarding the continued operations within the school nutrition services department. Throughout this presentation, you will hear our theme of improving food quality and ensuring or increasing student participation. You will see a comparison of participation over the last three years in our schools with the addition of more CEP schools. We will take a look at our average daily meals for all schools and a student meal debt comparison. In addition, we will discuss what we are doing to encourage more students... All right. There you go. That's right. That's right. All right. In addition, we will discuss what we are doing to encourage more students to enjoy meals at lunch with us in the cafeteria, from new foods to a public service announcement video campaign. And finally, we will shine a light on our school nutrition department's best assets along with what is next for school nutrition. This year, we added 20 additional schools to our CEP roles for a total of 110, which is 92% of schools. As a reminder, CEP allows us to offer... All right. There you go. That's right, that's right. All right, in addition, we will discuss what we are doing to encourage more students to enjoy meals at lunch with us in the cafeteria from new foods to a public service announcement video campaign. And finally, we will shine a light on our School Nutrition Department's best assets along with what is next for school nutrition. This year, we added twenty additional schools to our CEP roles for a total of one hundred and ten, which is ninety-two percent of schools. As a reminder, CEP allows us to offer breakfast and lunch to all students at no cost, and we have not had a price increase in our non-CEP schools in more than four years. As you know, students can't learn if they don't have good nutrition. Our goal is to feed our students and staff healthy meals to nourish their brains for great teaching and learning. Thanks to our hard-working staff, we're able to serve our school community so that they are fed healthy and nutritious meals, which is vital to strengthening their health and wellness while preparing our students for the world. Next, I want to talk about our students' participation in meal services for breakfast and lunch combined at all schools. This graph shows our average daily meals for the first four months of this school year versus the previous two years for all schools. As you can see, we have a steady increase in meals served month over month, and indicators suggest this trend will continue in December. You may notice that there are fewer meals in November than in October. There are also fewer days in November due to having fewer days in school when you take into account Veterans Day and the Thanksgiving holidays. This slide depicts the student meal debt from August through November of 2023 compared to August through November of 2024. Based on this data, the addition of CEP schools in GCS has drastically reduced the meal debt by over ninety percent. I will now turn it over to Travis Fisher, our Executive Director of School Nutrition Services.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Our school nutrition program has introduced innovative approaches to ensure more students have access to healthy meals, and we've done this through super snack, expanding a variety of popular foods, and continuing our Taste Test Tuesdays. This year, we changed from the traditional after-school snack to the super snack program for after-school students. This change has provided more food for our students and increased our federal reimbursement from a dollar twenty-one to four dollars and forty-three cents, which is an increase of three dollars and twenty-two cents per snack. Pictured here is a typical super snack of prepackaged items that students can also take home with them if they do not finish it in the after-school program. Some new and popular menu items this year are our bacon cheeseburgers, homemade chicken Alfredo, pepperoni pizza with turkey pepperoni, and one of my favorites is our chicken Parmesan. We encourage everyone to try these delicious options because they're awesome. We engage our students and listen to them through Taste Test Tuesdays. We find it vital to get student opinions on potentially new items, so we provide items for students to sample. Students in middle and high school try it and vote by scanning a QR code to leave feedback. Elementary students vote by placing stickers on a thumbs-up or thumbs-down board. And based on students' feedback, when they say they like it, we add it to the menu. If students do not like it, we don't add it to the menu. The majority rules. And here you can see that we tested buffalo chicken pizza, and because of our Taste Test Tuesday results, we've added it to the menu. The QR codes and taste tests allow students to give us their opinions on items they would like to see on the menu or sold à la carte. We value our students' opinions, as this is their program, and we want to serve items that they will enjoy. In January, we began the School Nutrition Advisory Council, or SNAC, kind of catchy. It's made up of a small group of cafeteria managers and staff. We wanted to give our dedicated kitchen staff a platform to share their voices and opinions on potential changes or innovative ideas. Our area supervisors meet once every other month with their teams. Additionally, members of the School Nutrition Services team are members of the superintendent's Classified Advisory Council. Our CEP schools can provide nutritious meals to our students at no cost. To encourage healthier choices, we offer additional fruits and vegetables. Students who only want an entree or one item can select two more items to complete a meal, all at no cost. For example, if a student only wants chicken wings, they would need to pay for them à la carte. However, if they selected an apple and a milk, it's considered a full meal, and this allows the School Nutrition Department to receive full federal reimbursement at no cost to the student or the family. Now, on the left, you will see our cheese pizza and our teriyaki, lemon pepper, garlic butter, buffalo, and barbecue-flavored wings. The center picture is our hundred percent fruit juice smoothies that students love, and on the right are fresh green salads. Of course, we try to offer a salad every day, either as an individual offering or as a side. And these are the images of our fresh-made salads that both students and teachers love. Ingredients include lettuce, cherry tomatoes, celery, cheese, cucumbers, broccoli, turkey, ham, or chicken. The Student Participation Campaign is being used to encourage all students to participate in the School Nutrition Services program at their schools. We want to give a special thanks to the Weaver Academy students and staff for helping to create a promotional public service announcement for this campaign that we will be using in all our schools. And the best reason students keep coming back is our smiling and friendly staff. They work hard to prepare good food, and they love their schools and their students. On this slide are the great teams of Western Middle, Peck Elementary, and Jones Elementary on the top, as well as Jackson Middle and Northwest Middle. Now, in the pink is Tracy Hunter and her staff at Blueford Elementary. Ms. Hunter was featured on WFMY Series Two's Honor Roll as a local hero for the great work that she does at Blueford. When talking to my team, they literally refer to the students as their kids. So they deserve all the credit. They show up every day, are sometimes the first people in the building, and sometimes the first smile that the students see to start their day. And we're very thankful to have such a dedicated staff. When considering how to expand career pathways for our School Nutrition Services team, we offer a manager training program for potential new managers every year. And we have also created an assistant manager position for potential new managers who could step into that role. Additional opportunities for professional growth include week-long culinary training opportunities that are offered by the state. So what's next for school nutrition? Our School Nutrition Department is excited to move into our new schools, and we are working toward an average district participation of eighty-five percent. The USDA is releasing stricter guidelines, so we'll have to find some new items that have less sodium, less sugar, and more whole grains. But we plan on utilizing Frankie the Food Truck, that's the district's food truck, to help with participation. We will continue to analyze our CEP data to determine if we can add additional GCS schools to our CEP list for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And we'll also continue seeking more opportunities for student and staff voices. Thank you all very much for your time this evening, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. We have Kim Erbey, and followed by Deborah Napper, followed by David Coats, followed by Chrissy Pratt. Kim?
For that presentation. One question I have, is it the same food during the summer program? Will it be?
Is it the same food during the summer program?
Are the same menu options available during summer feeding? Or during summer school?
A lot of times, yes. Not necessarily every... Now, during the school year, we have two, three, four, five different options. Summer meals, we try to have just one option to make it a quicker process, but it's always a meatless entree as well.
Okay. When the students choose à la carte, is it because they receive more of that item?
No, no. À la carte items are purchased, or they have to be purchased, so the meal gives them more food. An à la carte would just be one more item, would be an additional slice of pizza or an additional apple, something like that.
No, I'm just saying, like, when the students say, I only want the wings, are they getting more portion? Is that why they are choosing à la carte?
No, it's the same serving size.
It's the same serving size?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay. So, you know, I just want to shout out to the students of Andrews who notified us and, you know, let us know that we needed to do better with our meals, which I was allowed to go to the school and start tasting the food. So I continue to do that, no matter where I go. I try to taste the food, and I have to say so far, you are doing a good job.
Thank you very much, ma'am, I appreciate it. I have a good team there.
Thank you, Kim. Deborah, followed by David.
I just wanted to echo that because, yeah, we had lunch with my daughter that was here earlier over at Claxton the other day, and I think it's the first time I've ever walked in with chicken nuggets, and nobody offered to trade. The lunch looked fabulous, it was wonderful. I did want to ask a couple of questions just to kind of get some basic information out there. Can you tell us one more time, please, what CEP schools, what CEP stands for and what they are?
It's Community Eligibility Provision, and that's a government program that allows students to have breakfast and lunch at no cost.
And that's all students inside the particular school?
Yes, every student in that school.
And how many CEP schools do we have now?
A hundred and ten.
Out of a hundred and twenty-four, five, somewhere in there?
Just a hundred and twenty.
Okay. There you go, so a hundred and ten out of a hundred and twenty schools. And how, where does that funding for CEP schools come from?
It's from the federal government.
It's from the federal government. So this is not state-level money? This is not North... This is not local money? This comes from the Federal Department of Education?
Correct.
Correct. I think it's very... Huh? USDA?
Wait, what?
Okay, all right. Does this work through the Department of Education at all? Do you know? No? Okay. I wanted to clarify that because some of the things that are changing at the top right now. But this is a federal reimbursement program, not local monies at all. That is feeding our children breakfast and lunch every day, no cost, as long as they're eating a full meal. We're getting covered to feed them an entire full meal. It's a wonderful thing. You can't learn on an empty stomach. And the other thing is, yeah, the teenagers in middle schools are loving these smoothies. I hear about the smoothies all the time. So thank you for pulling them in, the things that interest them. You've done a fantastic job.
Thank you.
Thank you. David, followed by Chrissy.
Deborah asked the question I was going to ask, but I do have one. What are the criteria that allows a hundred and ten of our schools to qualify and they remain or not? Why aren't we at a hundred and twenty-something?
Good afternoon. So the threshold for district-wide to be able to participate is forty percent, have to qualify for free or reduced lunches or whatnot. We have to mix and match some of our higher poverty schools with some of our schools that are closer to that number but haven't reached that threshold yet in order to provide that universal meal. But the more schools that we add that do not meet that threshold, the less of the reimbursement that we actually get. So if we're serving really high-needs schools with this program, we get the maximum amount of that reimbursement. But as we add schools to that mix that have a higher income, so to speak, then the amount of the reimbursement goes down. So we have to keep that delicate balance between the two. We continue to look at our eligibility every year to try to add more schools to it without losing what that reimbursement would be, and we're confident that we can continue to do that each year.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Chrissy, followed by Kim.
Thank you so much for your presentation. It's really nice to hear how much progress you all have been able to make within the past year. I remember we had a brief update about a year ago, and it sounds like just so much hard work from your department. So thank you so much. I just had one quick question. I love that you're providing career pathways for your staff, and I wonder if there's any opportunity for some training for our students as well in the culinary arts or in the hospitality kind of services of, you know, helping with some of those additional kitchen duties? Is there any way that we could tap into our students as well and be providing them with additional job skills that can serve them once they finish with us?
So the School Nutrition Department has not looked into that yet, but I know that they have that program at Weaver Academy.
Okay, wonder... And is it something that you might be considering expanding throughout the county as well?
I think we can look at it. I think the USDA guidelines are pretty stringent in terms of who can be in the kitchen and how food is handled and prepared and served. But I mean, we're looking across the board. We're looking at HVAC, plumbing, you know, all of the different... I mean, we are the pipeline for careers, so we need to figure it out.
Absolutely.
So I would say we haven't gone there yet, but it certainly can remain on the table. I do think this USDA guidelines might be a little more stringent than us being able to credential in some of those other areas.
Okay. Fabulous. Thank you so much for all you're doing. Food insecurity is a huge issue for a lot of our students, and knowing that they can come in and consistently be getting a quality breakfast and lunch is just... It's so critical to their well-being and their education. So thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kim, followed by Betty.
Yeah, how often do we need to apply to the program?
Every year.
Every, every four years for the CEP program. We can look at it each year, but it will remain for four years.
Okay, so what would jeopardize a school not being able to participate?
So, yeah, it's gonna... Again, it's based off of the... the income rate for it, and so we have to make sure that across the board, we're able to stay above that forty percent threshold that's indicated as a part of the program. Right now, we feel like we could probably get to all of our schools being able to do that, but we evaluate that every April to determine if we're able to add additional schools or not and which schools that we're gonna add.
Okay. Because I do remember that when we asked families to participate by filling out the application process, when they don't do it every year, then we have like a hard time getting people to do it again. So what are we doing differently so that we sustain that participation with families?
I think part of what we're doing by adding to schools is so that they don't have to fill out that paperwork anymore. That can be a burden for families and increases our meal debt. It's really just a matter of the district looking at its financial state and seeing if we can take the hit of not receiving the hundred percent of the reimbursement and take a little bit less in order to feed more students. But that is our goal, is to be able to feed all of our students throughout the district.
So then, if there is a shortfall, where do we move that money from?
Well, historically, we've asked people to donate to pay for the meal debt. And it has to come... Since it's an enterprise system, if we don't get things like that, we would have to look at our local budget, or it would have to come from the fund balance of the actual School Nutrition Department, which, you know, we don't want to do. But again, I think the approach that we're taking to gradually continue to add schools to the program has proven well for us financially, as well as being able to get more students to eat the meals free. And I think, you know, hopefully soon, we'll be able to be at that hundred percent of our students are participating in the program.
Thank you.
Thank you. Betty, followed by Alan.
Okay, great presentation. I would say we started off with the chicken sandwich, I think, last year or two years ago, and we have really changed. We've really grown up, and I appreciate that. The chicken sandwich meant a lot to the students, so I know this buffalo wings is gonna mean much more. Have you considered having, like, student leaders at the school that can talk it up as far as making sure the kids, the students, get not only à la carte, they can get the milk and the juice or the vegetable fruit? So it'd be a whole meal, a full meal versus à la carte?
So that's an excellent idea, and that's part of the... So that's an excellent idea and that's part of the, the uh, participation campaign that the, the Weaver Academy students put together. That we're hoping to be able to show this video in all of our schools. Uh, that would kind of, that would encourage students to do just, just what you said, so.
Okay. You mentioned, I think we got to mention about the paperwork. Um, if we had all of the parents to complete the paperwork, wouldn't that mean more dollars coming to the school or to the district?
Let me clarify, so, be- because we have the C E P schools, we use the direct certification rate. So that's not a free introduced lunch form, they automatically, because of the amount of services that families in that school community are accessing at the federal level. That direct certification rate is what we use, so more forms would not generate any more revenue. What generates revenue is more kids getting the full meal. Um, and so that's kind of where the attention's been, and because it's enterprise, anything that we can do with those dollars. Um, including compensate people, would have to be generated by that same fund.
Okay, on page six. Um, the amount currently is three thousand and eighty-five dollars. That's a big difference from last year. So with that being said. When will we start um, trying to get funds to take care of that so we're not coming from another line item? Donations. I get that mean there.
Well, we have some, I mean, we have some funds that were identified for that purpose that have not been used. So we'll continue to look at it every month before we go and ask again.
Thank you. Um, Pastor, can I ask a follow-up question before yours? That, those dollars that are owed don't necessarily reflect students who would qualify for free and reduced lunch. Is that right? That could be that people just haven't paid their bill that can pay their bill. Okay, I just want to make the difference between the. Um, somebody that can pay their bill that's not and somebody that couldn't pay for lunches is different. We don't know what that is, but that could be in there, okay, Pastor Sheros.
Is Frankie the food truck available for community events? That is actually a serious question. It's a tool, is this a tool for community engagement? Or i- is there, is it possible for organizations to learn more about our school nutrition through that uh, unique and innovative tool?
So we're working towards that, it's gonna need a few uh, uh, equipment updates uh, before we can. Roll out and fry some fries in it and, and things like that. But we're, we're looking at that, yes.
And Frankie, just so you know, Frankie the food truck is currently being utilized right now to deliver. Uh, pre-packed food items to our early middle colleges and things like that. So that's how we're currently utilizing it, but yes, we are looking to move in the direction to have Frankie food truck and. Potentially other food trucks um, to help with community events like what you're speaking of.
Yeah, and there's so much innovation and imagination in this work and so appreciate the appreciation illustrating that and it, it just sparks more.
Thank you, no more questions? Alright, well, thank you very much. Glad to hear that the s- school lunches are enjoyable, you don't usually hear that, so. I don't have the nerve to try them yet, but I'm gonna trust you all. I know, I'm, I'm going one day, I know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go one day. Just gonna observe for a while. We are now at committee reports and I believe um, Board Member Bellamy Small um, wasn't feeling well and so. Um, Board Member Napper has the report.
I do, thank you. Um, so for the policy committee report, at our November twentieth meeting, the policy committee voted to publish four recommendations for thirty-day public comment period. Beginning from December tenth through January ninth. The policy revisions are related to safety and financial management. Policy fifteen-ten slash forty-two-hundred slash seventy-two-seventy. School safety has been revised to reflect a new state law requiring that school boards have a policy about district and school threat assessment teams. New policies sixty-four-hundred slash eighty-four-thirty, procurement of goods and services and sixty-four-twenty slash eighty-four-sixty. Contracts with the board are recommended as part of a comprehensive legal review of our financial management policies. They reflect current practices related to competition, board approval of contracts, ethics and compliance with state law. Lastly, policy eighty-one-hundred, budgeting and fiscal management has been revisit, revised in the legal review. To focus on financial planning and reporting process. It also reflects current process, as most of our policies are quite outdated. As a reminder, you can review the revisions in detail in the attachments to the policy committee report on the board agenda. And they'll be featured on the GCS website and social media channels after this meeting. Policy recommendations will come back to the board for discussion at our January meeting after the public has had a chance to give their input.
Thank you, any questions? Alright, we're now at board member comments and I'll start with um, you Deborah. If you're ready.
Um. So um, David, welcome. Um, yeah, and uh, to everybody else who's uh, re sworn this evening, here we go again. Uh, as uh, my teenager so kindly reminded me out front, you know, we asked for it. She made it a little late and she made it a point to kind of elbow me in the side there. Um. There, there, to address some of the public comments earlier, there were a lot of concerns and, and um, worries expressed about the continuing support of our Department of Equity and Inclusion. And. I would like to ho- hopefully reassure the community around our. Leadership and our board members that support all of our students and all of our staff. Um, you know, parents are worried about their children being treated well. Uh, staff are worried about, you know, just the, just the opportunity to rise and do better and continue education and to have equal chances. Um, to earn and continue on in their work. Um, and we all remain committed to that vision. Your whole board is working for you, for our community, to, you know, support our staff and graduate the best students that we can. Um, you know, my daughter that was sitting here with me earlier, she's a third grader, she sat here and read this entire agenda off to me while we were waiting to start. Um, it was impressive, I know she can read, I didn't know she was that good. Um, and so I got to answer a few of her questions and um, just being able to go into the schools, have lunch with everybody. Visit with cover, Governor Cooper today and have him walk through a just incredibly impressive Claxton Elementary School. Um, is just a highlight of everything that we're able to do when we do all work together and support the system and the people in it from the inside out. Um, happy holidays to everyone, no matter what faith you follow, no matter what parties you throw. I hope you have a lovely holiday. Um, for, for yeah, us parents, a two-week warning, if you still need the Christmas presents. Uh, Godspeed, cuz you will not find me anywhere near Walmart or Target for the next two weeks. Everybody have a lovely day.
Thank you, David.
Well, first of all, I'm glad to be here. The election's over, but I need to acknowledge the help I received from many people who put me in this chair. Uh, if I tried to name them all, inevitably I'd leave somebody out, so I'm not gonna even try, uh, thank you. Um, a quality education for each of the individual children who attend Guilford County schools is our Polestar. Polaris, the Polestar guided ship's captains to safe harbors from days long gone. Our students' safe harbor is a quality education that meets their needs and disparate aspirations. And gives them a place in our dynamic economy. This is about them and also what is required to keep Guilford County. As a destination for companies looking for an educated workforce. As Board of Education, we're charged with providing oversight of all aspects of the district and to set policy. Overarching concepts to act as guides and nitty-gritty directives on a wide variety of subjects in accordance with law. We are not managers, but are here to see that our district is well managed through our Superintendent Dr. Oakley. We have the ability to strive for excellence, limited only by our resources. Which leads to a crucial point, this board has no power to tax. It relies on the federal government, the General Assembly and the county commissioners for funding. We have many students whose education gives them what they need to be successful in life, no matter their post-high school plans. But we have too many students who through no fault of their own. Uh, start school unprepared to learn and too often state that way. You know, that's one of the reasons that we're talking about diversity, equity and inclusion this night. Because it's super important for all of our students. But I would say most especially for the kids who start, start school with, standing in a deep hole. You know, we gotta bring them up. A mentor of mine, Dr. Edgar C. Thomas Jr. used to say, teaching is a priesthood. And the carol area of that is the teachers do not take a vow of poverty. The sales tax measure did not pass. But that does not let the feds, the general assembly or the county commissioners off the hook. I will advocate for a large professionally designed expansion of our pre-kindergarten programs. And for a qualified school nurse in every school. These along with a high dosage tutoring and many other programs currently provided. By Guilford County schools, I believe are necessary to keep all of our students safe and learning. Give us the tools and we will finish the job, was the cry of another generation, but it's apropos here. I look forward to working with my fellow board members and Dr. Oakley in the year to come. Anyway, have a great holiday, thank you.
Thank you, Chrissy.
Good evening, I would like to echo a little bit of what Board Member Napper said. In that stating that every single board member up here is here committed to all of the students of Guilford County. As I'm sure many of you know, we got inundated with a lot of emails today and there was a lot of misinformation in a lot of those emails. And I encourage you, if you have questions about somebody's opinions about something or what they think about what's going on in the schools or about how they're gonna vote. Reach out to them, reach out to them personally and say, hey, where do you stand on this and have a conversation? That's what this is all about, it shouldn't be about politics, it should be about doing what's best for the kids here in Guilford County. Um, also, holidays coming up, I hope that all of our teachers, students, staff, everybody gets to have a very restful break. For those of you who celebrate Christmas, Merry Christmas to you, if that's not your holiday, Happy Holidays to you. Um, and Board Member Napper, Amazon, why would you even go to Target or Walmart? It's all about the Amazon, I have so many packages coming every day. Um, but thank you, you know, to everybody within the school system for all of the things that you do. And everybody have a very restful break and come back, back in January, ready to finish out the school year, thanks.
Um, I want to say thank you to everybody that works in the school system to make it a great school system, number one. Uh, recently, we have lost several teachers that have spent many years in um. Working with our students and they are very much loved by the students that they um, worked with. And um, my son was one and he remembers that teacher very fondly. So just know that um, teachers are important. You're remembered way after um, you leave this earth. And I want to let the families know that we're praying for them during these holidays. So um. It's, it's hard to lose such dedicated educators during this timeframe. So um, but enjoy, I hope everybody did have a great Thanksgiving and I hope you have a blessed um, Christmas. And uh, everyone, the calendars for next year are out, make sure you know it was on the consent agenda, so you know, it's there, check it out, make your comments. So have a blessed holiday.
Thank you, Pastor Sheros.
I'd like to begin by saying I think that clock becomes more menacing every meeting. So taking seriously the three-minute time limit. I'll say that I know uh, many of us in this work feel how tenuous this moment for public education. Uh, we feel that in our country and we feel that certainly in our state. Um, particularly with the chronic funding needs and the failure to fully fund public education, all of its priorities. Um, this is very hard work at a time like that and I think when you're doing hard work, you need a safe. And encouraging place from which to do it. And so I'd like to say that I think it is no small thing and an incredibly reassuring value in our community. That we said in a board meeting tonight and every single comment by the public and by the community pointed us towards equity. Uh, towards the shared commu- commitment, this opportunity that we have. Um, and I want to claim what a unique gift that is and I hope that our staff and our educators can claim that too and the hard day-to-day work that you are doing. Know that that's the place from which you do it, this is the community from which you do it. And we continue that work as a board, we welcome Mr. Coats into that work and I'm grateful to continue that work in pursuit of equity. With the leadership of both our Chair and our Vice Chair uh, in the year ahead. My other comment tonight is simply to say, go Whirlies! Uh, as a Grimsley parent, I was posted up last Friday night for Grimsley Huff. Uh, and there was a minute left, it's fourth and six from the twenty-five yard line. Mitch, the magician, the best running back in the state of North Carolina, is out of the game on this play. Uh, Faison Brandon, Gatorade Player of the Year, he's totally cool under pressure, he rolls right. And DJ Howerton, tight end, is wide open uh, to his left. Twenty-five yard touchdown with a minute left in the game. Now, just before this, the Whirly parent volunteers who are second to none in the concessions. Had just come down to pass out all of the extra popcorn to the massive student section there. And so as, as DJ Howerton scores the game-winning touchdown, popcorn's going everywhere. It's like a, it's a popcorn storm, it's falling all over the place. And then Huff's last attempt is stripped away. Um, and while, after the teams had cleared, the students with a subtle nod from administration were permitted to rush onto the field. I'm watching my son and his friends amidst all of this. And in the midst of that, Principal Jed O'Donnell looked at me and said, look at this, this is Guilford County schools! And that's the kind of energy that we carry into the holidays and into the year ahead and for the Whirlies into Friday night versus Weddington.
Thank you, Betty.
Thank you, good evening. Um, thank you all very much um, for the reelection. Um, as Vice Chair, congratulations to Board Member Coats, you're welcome. Um, last month, I attended a program at Smith High School and that was um, put on by Buster Brown. It talked about love and peace and happiness. And it's um, had an opportunity for kids to debrief, um, to give their story, to tell their story and how they feel. So it was a sidetrack from bullying and it really helped them a whole lot um, to share their story and the story was very, very meaningful. They had food trucks, they had um, guest speakers, they had music, they had a party, they had everything going on. Um, also went to a bullying um, panel discussion at Southwest um, this week. That was great, um, had an opportunity to listen to students talk about their bullying and what happens afterward and what should they do? And of course, that is talk to a responsible adult. Their adult could be the cafeteria worker, it could be the custodian, it could be anyone that they trust. So they really got it, they really got it and they are really doing hard and trying to make that work. Windsor Center had their groundbreaking um, few weeks ago. It was phenomenal, there were so many people there, um, and it was great to see um, the structure that we can have on the southeast um, area of Greensboro. We don't get much from the side of Greensboro, so um, we cherish and celebrate every little brick we can get.
Right Dana?
Happy holidays to everyone and we'll see you in twenty twenty-five. Um, thank you very much staff, um, for all you do. I know you don't hear that enough, but I really thank you all a lot because I know I can pick up the phone or text or send an email out. And you all even answer back on the weekend, don't answer back on the weekend, you can wait till Monday, okay, cuz it's not that important, okay? Um, next food truck to come out, you got Frankie the food truck? That's a male, we need a female truck, okay? So you can have Betty, you have Dana, you can have Whitney, you have whatever, but we need a truck named by a female, okay? Okay, no, this Frankie, this Frankie's a male, we want a female truck, thank you all very much.
Thank you, Kim.
Betty's Frankie can be a girl, by the way, just like.
I know, but on this case, it's a male and we need a female truck, thank you, Kim.
Oh, yeah, congratulations um, to our returning board members and welcome David uh, to be a part of, of the greatest. of, of the greatest school system in North Carolina right now. Um, you know, I'm looking forward to Peck opening up and Faust and, you know, what that celebration is gonna look like. And, you know, have a happy holiday to all of our workers, you know? Please get some rest, enjoy your families. I've decided that I'm going to reminisce, um, my six children, and I bought them toys for the holidays. They all are gonna get a toy, um, remembering their childhood. I'm honoring their childhood, um, this year, and I will not be moved. I will continue to fight for equity. I will continue to work with this wonderful board. Again, welcome back, uh, Dina and Betty to leadership as well, and I believe we're gonna, I'm gonna stay the course and continue to be steadfast in this work and ending the school-to-prison pipeline and making sure that children have an equitable education to prepare them for their future as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. I was, uh, able to participate and ride on the float for the Downtown Greensboro Parade. I'd like to thank Commissioner Frankie Jones and Commissioner Skip Alston for sharing their bags of candy with me, cause I showed up with no candy, so, uh, they, they, they shared their bags of candy with me, and it was really packed. There was a ton of, uh, children and families and people out there, so it was wonderful. Um, congratulations to, um, our re-elected board members. David, um, it's gonna be a pleasure working with you, looking forward to that. Um, thank you again to Michael Logan. While we had a rocky start, I think we did our best to try to figure out how to work together, and, um, it's still ongoing. Uh, it was nice to see him as well as Deborah and David, um, the Superintendent at Claxton Elementary today, to hear Governor Cooper and his support of public education, and to see Mo Green. Wonderful to hear from him and have him back here in Greensboro, our Teacher of the Year, um, and to so many Guilford County Schools folks there. Also want to just, uh, thank everyone for coming out, everyone for sending emails. It was really overwhelming, um, the, the Facebook posts that I put out, cause I usually don't put out things on Facebook. I put pictures of my dogs or share an article, but it was some information, misinformation out there. We hired the Superintendent, and my work as Chair, um, is to work with the Superintendent and her vision and her plan. I don't dabble in professional development. I don't bother the staff. I don't tell her and pose on her what she should do. And so, when the misinformation went out there, um, people had an opportunity to correct that and didn't. And, um, far too often, I just say I'm not gonna dignify certain things with a response, but narratives are powerful. They're more powerful than facts. And so, I couldn't let that sit, and I didn't realize it was going to create this avalanche of, um, support, but it just lets us know our community's behind us, and they're behind the work of this district. And I trust the Superintendent to guide, um, the staff and, um, the operations of this district, and will continue to do so. And I thank you for your support, Pastor Sheraus, and all of you that supported, uh, me tonight and those that didn't, um, but certainly just, um, the community, I love you, and I thank you, um, for your trust and your support, and this is really a collective effort. Again, devastated, um, over the loss of Yvonne Johnson, um, but, um, really excited to participate in, um, the celebration of the life that she led. And, um, also wanna lift up Nikki Giovanni as one of our, um, you know, sort of scholars and poets and writers and activists in this country. And so, we're, we're losing people that, um, made it possible for us to be here, so. Um, with that said, I hope everyone has a wonderful holiday, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you, staff.